Hello and welcome to AGN. My name is Carmen Morad. On a very special program on the Modern Assyrian today, I have a special guest, Naromson Goriel from Modesto, California. Welcome to the program, Naromson.
Hi Carmen, thank you so much for having me. I appreciate your time.
I appreciate your time, Naromson. I know you are extremely busy, taking time out of your schedule to have this conversation with us to talk about something very important coming up in just a few months. The last time we spoke, Naromson, we talked about so many different topics. We talked about diversity in our communities. We talked about elections, the census. And you living in Modesto, tell us about your plans and what you are running for.
Well, thank you so much once again for having me. My name is Naromson Goriel and I am running for Modesto City Council District Five. District Five encompasses Coffee, Sylvan, all the way up to Tully, to East Orangeburg, close to the College Area neighborhoods, McHenry villages, I believe in our district. And the district goes all the way up until Snyder. It's a very diverse district with incredibly vibrant population. We have the new Save Mart that was just built. And more, more businesses are coming within our district. Our district is becoming larger and it's going to require some, some obstacles, to get over some obstacles. There are a lot of challenges facing our town and that includes our district as well. So I'm running to alleviate homelessness, provide more affordable housing, bring economic prosperity to our district, and provide public safety for everyone that's a resident in our district as well.
Those are wonderful components of what a campaign is all about, Naromson. However, as you know, COVID has wreaked havoc in our communities and in our city. And of course, Modesto was not left out of that. Tell us which board you serve on. I know you're very active in the city of Modesto. You show up at city council meetings. You, you are involved in the process. Tell us what it is that members of the community need to be more aware of when it comes to being involved and informed, about what's happening in their city and how their government works.
Sure, thank you so much for that, Carmen. I appreciate the praise. I'm the chairman of the Board of Zoning Adjustment for the City of Modesto, which, which is an organization that tailors property use to our health, safety, and public welfare as best as possible. We provide ordinances and variances for communities that wish to modify their homes or commercial, commercial real estate. It's very in-depth, requires a lot of work on the code. And you have to understand the continuity of certain neighborhoods. And I'm very proud to be serving on that board. I just was reappointed this past month. So I have another four years on the Board of Zoning Adjustment. And I'm also chairman of the Landmark Preservation Commission, which preserves our beautiful landmarked property and real estate in our town, such as the McHenry Mansion and other beautiful, beautiful aspects of our town. And I'm very proud to be a part of the Landmark and Preservation Commission. And we're looking to discuss the McClure House perhaps, and see how we could improve that building in our town as well. And to increase the vibrancy of downtown Modesto and to embrace certain cultures and heritages like the art community in downtown Modesto. That could bring such amazing, such amazing diverse shops and community groups and an art hub. And we have just a potential to do wonders in our town. And I'm excited to be a part of the process now. And I'm enthusiastic, which is why I'm running for city council.
Fantastic. You know, Naromson, I have lived in Modesto for decades. And, and I'll tell you, there's always ideas and conversations that I have heard about improving our downtown area. It's always been a place of where you go to work and then you leave. Yet now with all the ideas, and I'm sure with the boards that you serve on, you're aware of more ideas that are coming in, more funding that comes in. For example, we want to see more restaurants. We want to see more cafes, some museums perhaps. And just trying to get that feel of, you know, we can go to downtown and have a nice dinner and perhaps walk around. And then the conversation of the homelessness comes in. Tell us a little bit about what you know that the city of Modesto is doing. Because one of the things you're going to hear from your constituents is, what is our city doing to end homelessness in Modesto?
That's a very good question. Well, I, as a trial attorney, I work in downtown Modesto every day. And I pass the courthouse in 10th Street every day. And I do see homelessness as, as a crisis in our town, as is in a lot of other towns in California. The good news is we do have a lot of hope and opportunity for downtown Modesto. The courthouse is moving to a new location on 9th Street. And it will be built and constructed in about 2023 or 2024. It should be up as a structure in 2023. But the courts will be calling every single matter in 2024, which means Juvenile Hall, civil cases, traffic infractions will all be most likely at the new courthouse. So that's going to be an influx of more people. Further, because of that opportunity, we have the Hall of Records, the old courthouse, and the county jail that are now going to be abandoned. So we have an opportunity in the heart of Modesto to provide housing, a grand central market, and maybe an art hub or a business incubator in that area, which is, as you know, very, very perfect location if you're a commuter. And also the ACE train will be running in about a year, which will be providing commuter trains to San Jose and possibly San Francisco, which is going to be very alleviating and a breath of fresh air for commuters because they no longer have to, you know, go on that two to three hour commute that is just brutal and an utter waste of time for people while they can be on a train and run errands and maybe contact family members through email or phone and set up maybe a schedule for their day, all while communing simultaneously. So these are big opportunities for the city of Modesto. And the next city council member of District Five, although we are not in downtown, needs to understand that we are all one Modesto. And it's important to bring a vibrant downtown Modesto because once we invest in our downtown, we're investing in Modesto's economy. And another big proponent of, I was a big proponent during my mayoral race of the Modesto Children's Museum. And they bought the building, which was formerly a coffee house. And I cannot wait till the Modesto Children's Museum opens up and to take my niece there because I know it's going to be a wonderful area. And that right there will be a catalyst on bringing children and family members there. And with housing, the children museum, the new courthouse, and possibly the Modesto Nuts moving downtown Modesto, you have a dynamic with a commuter train to have a big, you know, a perfect storm of bringing back vibrancy to downtown Modesto. And that's when you'll have businesses, grocery stores, and a lot more people, you know, just congregating in that area. And that's going to provide us with much-needed tax revenue for services that we need that have been on, that have been dormant for about decades now. So, you know, for example, animal control, we get more tax revenue, provide better care for animals. I see a lot of, unfortunately, dead carcasses of animals on the side of the road in Modesto. It's, it's a big problem. It's eyesore, it's terrible to see, it's tragic and it's sad. We need people to, first off, take better care of their pets and to keep them indoors as much as possible. And number two, quickly pay respects to the, to the dead carcass and dispose of it immediately as respectfully as possible. So people don't see that anymore. It's also very unhealthy if somebody walks past it on the sidewalk. And it's just a terrible thing to see on the side of the road. So those, that's one side of tax revenue that would be great for our town. And, you know, working with nonprofits, collaborating with nonprofits is also something I'm a big, a big proponent of. And I've been doing that as, as we speak. I collaborated with the Boy Scouts, the Cub Scouts, and the Girl Scouts of Modesto to help with the park cleanup, collaborated with young members in high school to clean up parks as well. And it's been an amazing experience. We've had nine park cleanups this year each month. We've also collaborated with nonprofits like Love Stanislas for Love Modesto. We've had those twice and they've been a great success. We cleaned up bags and bags of trash, Carmen, like so much that the city had to come pick it up from the side of the road. So, you know, that's the type of councilman I will be. When I see something, I will clean it up. I will make sure that our district is clean and safe for all our residents. And there's a big elderly community in our, in our district. I'm very proud of that. And these retirement communities are beautiful. We have to provide public safety for these people because they help pave the way for, for our city right now. They've, they paid the taxes for the new schools and the roads and then, and the infrastructure we have. So we have to pay respects to the elderly community.
You know, Naromson, you beautifully said what, what my next point was going to be in my next question. Yes, you are elected by the constituents in the fifth district, which where you live and you are running to represent. However, it is your decision-making process and everything that you just described to me that you will be voting on issues. That's what the city council does. It has to do with services. It has to do with the collaboration of the different city departments and nonprofits and other community collaborations, as we call them. So that is what it takes. People shouldn't just expect their city or local government to do everything for them. There's a responsibility, volunteering. You just mentioned the protection for the seniors and the connection and the collaboration of our youth. So beautifully put. Let's talk about your district. How can people find out? I know you said the streets that, that are the boundaries of where people live. What is the estimated population of District Five?
That's a very good question. I think it's around 25,000, 30,000. I know there are about 20,000 registered voters in District Five. So there's about 25 to 30,000 people in the district. And you could actually find, that's a very good question on how to find your district. Because a lot of people don't know their local city council districts. And that's okay, everyone is busy in their lives. But you can actually go and find out where your district is. My simple task is I just go to Google or any search engine and I type in, what is my council district in Modesto, California? And then you click enter and you'll see that the city of Modesto has a GPS website that you put in your exact address. It's a little tedious, you have to put in the address on each box. So they have the number, the street, and what kind of street. Is it a boulevard? Is it, you know, is it a cul-de-sac? Is it a road? So for example, my, if my address was 1234 Main Street, you would have to put 1234 Main and then Street, click enter, and you'll see where your council district is. It will point it out on the map and will let you know. And for example, 1234 Main Street, I'll put, I'll put that in. It'll come out as District Five, Jenny Canoyer is my council member. And my, they'll also provide you with who's your senate, who's your congressman, who your senators are, your state senate, and your assembly member.
Great information. That, that's fantastic. Thank you for educating us on that. Because that's one thing that people are really confused about, not knowing who their representative is in the city council or board of supervisor. Or even though we're going through the redistricting phase right now after the census, I don't think there will be major issues. But never say never, we'll have to wait till the end of the year, perhaps beginning of the new year, to find out exactly what changes will happen. But let's talk about diversity in the city of Modesto. As you know, you were born in Modesto, right?
I was, yes. Born in Memorial Hospital, actually Doctor's Hospital, excuse me. I was born in Doctor's Hospital. My pediatrician, I think, was Memorial Hospital or my private doctor. So yes, I was born and, and born and raised in Modesto. Went to Stocker Coffee Elementary School, U-Stack Middle School, and graduated from Bayer High School in 2002. Go Patriots! And I had two years of Modesto Junior College, which were fantastic two years. Probably my favorite years of college were my first two years at Modesto Junior College. A fabulous experience, some of the greatest professors I had during my academic career. And, you know, I can't thank the public schools of Modesto. I can't thank them enough for, for doing wonders and helping me out with such great, great obstacles I had. So that's, you know, I, you know, growing up in Modesto, it's, has been a great experience. And everything I am is because of the city of Modesto.
You know, the reason I, I mentioned that, Naromson, is because it is so refreshing and so heartwarming to see young, educated men like yourself, who born and raised in Modesto, but you pursue higher education. And, and I want everyone to know that, you know, you went to Berkeley, you went to law school, you're now a criminal defense attorney. But you chose to come back to Modesto. You chose to come back to serve in your community, in your city where you were born and raised. And that is something that we really need to pay attention to. Because when you take pride in your community, in your city, and you want to give back and serve, that's really commendable to me. So kudos to you for that.
Thank you so much, Carmen, I appreciate it. And, you know, you do a lot of great things in the community as well. You're a volunteer, you help people register to vote. You, you explain to them that you can actually vote in Assyrian. So those Assyrians in Stanislas County, you could actually request your ballot to be written in Assyrian, in our native language. And you could vote for me in our native language if you're in my district, which is beautiful. And Carmen helped make that happen. So thank you so much, Carmen. That is huge because that's going to let Assyrians be more a part of the process. They're going to feel accepted and included in a process. That's very important. Voting is incredibly important. I cannot stress how important it is to vote. Doesn't matter what you're voting for, please participate always. And so thank you so much, Carmen, for doing all that great work in our community because we need to be more involved. And, you know, we, we have a huge population in Turlock. We have a population in Modesto and Series. We need to be more involved and there should be more Assyrians out there during the public process and participating and engaging and helping planning our, our, our future of our county. So thank you so much, Carmen. I can't thank you, can't thank you enough.
Thank you for bringing that up. Of course, I work with a great team at the Assyrian American Civic Club of Turlock. As you know, there is a number of us that work together. But teamwork is so important. And you brought up voting. And this is where it gets really, really important. You know, we talked about diversity, the importance of our communities, our heritage and background, and a sense of ownership of our city and our community. This is when it really comes in. This is when Stanislas County voters can request their ballots in three languages, Assyrian, or on paper Assyriac, and Punjabi and Khmer. Now imagine, imagine if we can reach out to all of these diverse communities to make sure to know that they matter, their language and heritage matters, that they are addressed. As you know, each community has its own challenges and strengths. So it is so important. And I always, Naromson, every candidate that I have interviewed through the years since this process has become available, I ask them, do you want to see what your name and bio looks like in our language? Simply request your ballot and it will be sent to you. And even those voters and constituents that choose to take their ballots and drop it off, or they want to go vote at the voting centers now that they are called, those ballots in those languages, they're called Assyxile ballots, are available. So thank you for bringing that up. I am very proud to be a part of that because each community needs to own the strength that it has. We, the Assyrian community, have now the strength and numbers. We, especially in your district in Modesto, District Five, District Three, we always talk about Turlock when it comes to our community. But we need to start talking about the power and the strength and numbers that we have in Modesto. And I do believe your campaign for the city of Modesto, for your district, will really be an opportunity for us to have these conversations. We'd like to hear from you more, we'd like to see you, and we really would like to have these gatherings more in that district. You know, Councilwoman Jenny Canoyer that is terming out, she is a dear friend to the Assyrian community. I have looked up to her as a mentor. She's a wonderful councilwoman and someone that really mentors. And her platform was improving the quality of life of seniors and then homeless seniors as well. What is your platform, Naromson? What is it that you want to be known for as you are concentrating not on that district, but for the entire city of Modesto?
Oh, that's a really good question. I love Jenny, she's great. I'm, I'm close with Jenny, we, we speak all the time. She's a wonderful person and I appreciate her support. She is my representative and it's been great to have her as a representative for these past eight years. And, you know, I, I, my, I want to be known for tackling Modesto's most critical issues and providing the opportunity for Modesto to become an even more safer and desirable place for everyone to call home. You know, for example, homelessness, we have to tackle homelessness through the subsets of different types of homeless populations. You have just families that are down on their luck. You might have someone that just maybe is on, is addicted, is addicted to maybe drugs or alcohol. You have someone that is suffering from domestic violence and has been kicked out of their homes. Or Behavioral Health Recovery Services type that requires counseling because they're severely mentally, have severe mental illness. So, you know, there's different ways to tackle different individuals. For example, there's the Downtown Streets Team that helps people get back on track. And while they have a proper employment, cleaning up and making the downtown Modesto a beautiful place and just making it a little more accessible and beautifying the, the, the areas that have been underdeveloped and overlooked. And those people have an opportunity to become what they really strove, what they really strive to be and not go back in that vicious cycle of homelessness that is just really disheartening for people. And you have the Behavioral Recovery Services. We need more mental health beds for those that need counseling and so clinicians to provide them with medication and maybe psychiatry support to get them in a better place where they can be productive members of our society. And everyone wants to be a productive member. Nobody wants to take handouts, nobody wants to be homeless. We have to tackle the false atonement, the depression, the anxiety, the mental health problems. We have to have awareness about mental health. And we have to work with Behavioral Health and Recovery Services and work with CSOC, which is the county's homelessness authority. Work with Housing Authority as well, Barbara Kraus, who does an amazing job with very little budget and creates housing for many different people. And that's something that we definitely need more of. So homelessness is a big issue. And economic prosperity, helping small businesses overcome the pandemic and overcome the burdens of the pandemic. Getting people to spend money in Modesto and not going maybe to the Bay Area during the weekends and spending money there. We have an opportunity to rebuild the farmers, to help embrace and build the farmer's market into a better, even more better place to buy local farm fresh products. It's, you know, just an amazing opportunity we have in this town to provide the access to economic commodities that have been absent in our town. And also public safety, the fire department, increasing the budget for the fire department slowly and incrementally to the point where they'll be able to provide medical services on the spot because they're usually and always, actually, they're always the first on the scene. And we have about 37 less firefighters right now in 2021 than we did in 2007. And Modesto has grown since then. So we need more firefighters that are adequately trained, also because of fire season as well. And we need to help and work with the police department on providing more different types of enforcement of the law and maybe working with the police department to have different clinicians and community members of the Behavioral Health and Recovery Services to provide some type of different program rather than incarceration for our mentally ill communities. So there's a lot to work, there's a lot to do, a lot to work on. But we definitely can make it happen and overcome the obstacles if we work together as a community. So I want to be known as, you know, someone that brings prosperity, tackles homelessness, and gives this, gives the city the public safety they deserve.
I think you mentioned it all. And I like to sum it up in saying quality of life issues, really. Because, you know, economic vitality is important to everyone. Public safety is important to everyone. And then so is this universal problem of homelessness. I've talked to, you know, police departments, sheriff representatives, and everybody has to tackle this. It's not something that just the city does. As you mentioned so eloquently, the county and departments play their own role. The city and the city council and different departments play their own role. And then there's always, as you said earlier, the nonprofits that play a role. But we all have to have a main objective, which is how do we reduce it and alleviate it? And then provide those services to have that continuity for those who want it. We always talk about those who want, you know, you can't force services on the homeless. It is not illegal to be homeless. So this conversation will go on and on. But thank you for all the information that you shared with me and our viewers, Naromson. I have been watching your career for years now. You are rising and rising. And I just want to thank you for choosing to serve. I want to thank you for representing not just the city, but you're so proud of your heritage and your background. And again, that is refreshing to me. Please come back to this program and share with us more ideas you have. In closing, Naromson, how can your supporters reach out to you and contact you?
Thank you so much, Carmen. I appreciate your time and all the effort you put into providing Assyrian community the information they need to live a better and successful life. Thank you so much once again. For those that want to volunteer or help out my campaign, you can email, you can email my campaign at gorielformodesto2022@gmail.com. If you'd like to donate, you could go to ActBlue, type in my name, Narumson Gorielle, and you'll see my form. You can donate how much ever you like. Any amount is 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 gracious. And we appreciate anything that um uh the community donates to our campaign. We appreciate everyone's hard work. And, you know, I I just would like to praise all of the Assyrians, the young Assyrians of the Assyrian Policy Institute of making awareness such a uh such a uh important topic in Washington DC and around the country. They're doing wonders, uh Carmen, and and that's that's great. We see more and more congress members accepting recognition of the Assyrian genocide and for more um programs to help out the Assyrians in the diaspora. And that's that's thanks to all the hard work of the young Assyrians in the Assyrian Policy Institute and everyone that's working hard and collaborating with them as well. So I would just like to praise the hard work of Assyrians. There's a lot of Assyrians out there doing wonders for the community. So, you know, keep it up, keep up the good work. You guys are all an inspiration to everyone. Thank you so much, Carmen, for 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 doing everything uh that you can for the Assyrian community. And anything you need, um I'm there. So please, please don't hesitate to reach out, reach out to me and my campaign. Thank you so much. We can't thi- I can't thank you enough.
Thank you, Narumson, for the kind words. And, you know, when we um understand each other, when we understand how we need to elevate our community to a level that we can have these conversations with our elected officials at the level of the Congress and Senate and state officials in each state that we live. And I agree with you. I think the Assyrian Policy Institute is doing a magnificent job. I have participated in in a few of their meetings, not just in our district, whether it's been congressional or other conversations. And this is why so it's uh exciting to have members of the Assyrian community that are educated in political sciences, they are active and involved, and just like you, run for office. And this is why we need to support one another and have these conversations to make sure we understand each other's values and how we can have um Assyrians in office, how they can provide internship and mentorship for others to follow in their footsteps.
Absolutely, Carmen. I agree one hundred percent. And and you just, you hit the hammer right on the nail on that. We need more Assyrians participating in the public process. It's it'll be great for our community.
Wonderful. Um Narumson, I would like to thank you for your time, for joining me today. I would like to invite you to invite us to be a part of the activities that you will be doing. I know we still have a few more months before uh Election Day. But one of the things we do at Assyrian Global Network is to raise awareness, is to make sure that we have a showcase and everyone globally can see what Assyrians are doing. And running for office is very important. So we wish you the best, and we invite you to come back.
Thank you, and I will definitely accept that invitation, Carmen. I can't wait to be back on the show. You have a great, you have a great evening, and thank you so much, everyone, for tuning in and taking the time to listen to me. I really appreciate it. God bless.
It's our pleasure. This concludes my conversation with Narumson Gorielle, running for City of Modesto District Five. Join me on the next Modern Assyrian on AGN.